Frank may be, oh, thank you. Thank you, Brian. I understand that Frank may be able to join us just a little bit later. But why don't we begin with a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Rowena.
Here.
Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Ms. Wells.
Here.
Ms. Sapon.
Here.
And Mr. Schumann.
Here. Okay. Thank you. We have a quorum and we're prepared to conduct business. We, we have only one public hearing this evening. Frankly, while I don't see any public, we still should go through the rules and they are that the applicant will be given an opportunity to give a complete presentation. And if during that presentation, the commission members have any questions, feel free to ask them. Once the presentation has been completed, there'll be an opportunity for the public to speak. Members of the public have only a single opportunity to speak, so I'd ask that you make sure that you take the opportunity to say everything that you wish to. And we simply ask that your comments, questions, remarks be appropriate and respectful. Once the public has had an opportunity to speak, the applicant will be given an opportunity to answer any questions or give any further comments regarding what, what they've heard. And during that period, the commission members will again have an opportunity to ask any questions that they like. With that, I'd ask if there is anyone whose picture is showing who is not part of this public hearing, if you could please take your picture down until your item is going to be heard.
Is this for public hearing, the 25 Van Zandt matter?
Yes, it is.
I am recused from that, so I will turn my video off and wait until it's over.
Okay. Thank you, Galen. The public hearing is 2021-18R/SPR/CAM, 25 Van Zandt Street condominium, 25 Van Zandt Building Zone text amendment to create a vocational trade workforce training center school use and to allow the use as a principal use in the industrial one zone in conjunction with a proposed vocational trade school within an existing structure. And with that, I would invite the spokesperson for 25 Van Zandt to begin their presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, commission members. My name is Hyrum Peck, representing the applicant, the owner of the building this evening. I know that we've had preliminary discussions previously and we've been working on some of the questions that came up at that time. So I'll keep my presentation relatively brief. I think that the application is, has been summarized by the chairman for two parts. That is the definition, the addition to the definition to the regulations of a vocational trade school. And we're certainly happy and completely accept the recommendations that were made by staff with regard to the definition of trade school to be added to the regulations. The purpose of the application is to provide for that use in an existing building at 25 Van Zandt to the maximum size of 150,000 square feet, maybe less, but that's what the application currently requests for the maximum size for that use in that location. In addition to that, commissioners, there is a revision to the regulations proposed as well to allow this use in the I-1 zone. It's not currently allowed in that zone and our application is to allow that use in that zone. Some of you may know that the, the building is existing, has been existing since the 20s, is about 256,000 square feet in gross square footage. 229,000 square feet of that building is the gross leasable area. The traffic and parking issues, we submitted a traffic and parking study and I'll let Mark Virtucci talk about that in just a moment. We also understood as of our, our previous meeting prior to the public hearing that the commission had some questions on that and we submitted a revised portion of that report and Mark can address that. We hope that addresses some of your questions. What I would also say that we've had some time to work through some of the questions that came up and worked hard with the owner to have him understand what the commission's concerns and questions might be. And so we've added some additional parking spaces to what was originally proposed as far as this application. And Mark can talk about that in a moment as well. One of the other questions that the commission had last time had to do with the easement, parking space easement on the north side of the property along the Metro North tracks as a DOT easement. I have a copy of that that I will send to staff. I can send that tomorrow morning if you will. I apologize, a storm knocked out my home office internet and so this is kind of a makeshift evening meeting with regard to this meeting myself, but I can get that to the, to the staff tomorrow morning. The easement from DOT is pretty clear and it is shown on the site plan. There's approximately 50 spaces on the north side of the parcel which encroach into the DOT property and we have an easement for that and I'm happy to submit that for the record. We also know that, that we were waiting for a letter from TNP for, from, from city staff and we did get that on Tuesday and are working through some of the questions that they had at that time. The, pretty much the last thing that I want to say this evening is that we just received moments ago, I think Steve sent me a copy of the DPW review and we're happy to address those questions as well. I'm not sure I can address them on the spot, but I certainly want to let you know that we're willing, more than willing to work through those between now and perhaps the next time the commission meets on this matter and get those addressed to your full satisfaction. We think that we'll have responses that are suitable and satisfactory for all those questions, both raised by TNP and by DPW prior to the, the next time you meet. I would like to note too that we did meet with the planning commission, as you know, and I assume that their approval of this project is part of your record. I just want to make note for that so that the commission's aware that that particular approval should be part of your file at this time as well. In addition to that, we also wanted to note that we did receive the letter from DEEP finding that it is basically in concert with requirements of this particular area as far as they're concerned with regard to coastal. Those are basically the, the main points that I wanted to make, Mr. Chairman. I think we're happy to answer whatever questions the commission may have. Certainly don't want to waste your time with regard to talking about questions which we haven't had an opportunity to fully research at this moment, but we'd be glad to answer any questions that we can this evening. And with that, unless you have any questions of me, I'd like to turn it over to Mark Virtucci to talk a little bit about the traffic and parking.
I have a question. I was more than a little bit concerned about getting both your responses quite late in the process, but also getting the TNP questions to you so late in the process. And while I don't in any way want to cut off your opportunity to make your presentation, I do want to ask the question, is it worth, I mean, I've read your doc, I've read all of the documents. Is it worth, Mr. Virtucci, discussing your responses to earlier questions when you're really not, and understandably not, prepared to respond to all of these new questions that have been brought forward by DPW? Would it not be better simply to wait until our next meeting when you've had an opportunity to go over those questions and give a thoughtful answer to them?
Mr. Chairman, I completely agree. Mark and I had talked a little earlier today about that and certainly the possibility that we may not say anything at all. I would leave that to Mark, but I would tell you this, that we both plan to keep our presentations very short with exactly the anticipation that you just mentioned and hopefully at the next meeting have complete answers for you on all those questions. If he could give a brief overview of just what we had done in the meantime, I think that might be helpful to you though.
Well, I don't want to do anything that would compromise your opportunity to make your case, so I'm more than willing to listen.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, could I interrupt for one second? I'm sorry, I got, I, I lost my connection towards the end of what you were saying, so I'm not sure what the ending on it was, but I tried to read as best I could all of the information that was.
Richard, we're losing you.
Maybe, Richard, maybe turn your, turn the video off and just go with the audio, maybe that'll help a little bit.
I'm gonna off and come back.
Okay.
Better.
Okay. So, so if that's acceptable to you, Mr. Chairman, certainly pending whatever questions the commission has, maybe Mark can give a very brief reason, just kind of an overview of what we've done so far. And we were happy to work on those questions that we just recently received from TNP and DPW and, and get those back as soon as possible.
Okay. Mr. Virtucci, though, I'd ask if you could just hold off for a minute or two to see if Richard can come back on and ask his question, which may be relevant.
Sure.
Time of day analysis, which determines, you know, the parking demand for every hour of the day and then that highest number is basically your, your parking demand requirement for the site. You know, and, and the basis of this being that not all the uses are, you know, generating their, the highest rate of demand at, at same time of the day. So there's a bit of a credit that can be taken there in the shared parking analysis as opposed to just saying our parking requirement for the site is, you know, what the zoning regulations would require for each separate land use. So we did this shared parking analysis two ways based on Urban Land Institute, ULI methodology and also Institute of Transportation Engineer, ITE methodology. We also utilized a 20% transit oriented development credit in this analysis. The basis being that not everyone's just going to drive to this site. The site has excellent access to transit and to Metro North, to bus service, the Lock Bridge project as well. Also, you know, there's sidewalks in the area for, for foot traffic, so we used a 20% transit credit in the analysis as well. So without getting into too much detail, I'll just boil down what the numbers came out to be. The, the ULI methodology indicates a total parking demand of 346 spaces on the site and the ITE methodology projects 358 spaces that would be required for the site. So they're similar. And when you look at the total parking supply that we have on the site, we have about 300 spaces that are striped. And we also have the availability of 90 spaces across the street at 22 and 28 Van Zandt. They're offsite, but they're right across the street. That can be used. So that was one change from our original analysis in, in the supplemental letter we just submitted, we accounted for those additional 90 spaces. So 390 spaces is our total capacity. So, you know, given that the demand projections are 346 or 358 depending on the methodology used, we do have a surplus of parking on the site when you look at what, what is projected for the, for the use breakdown within the building. On the traffic side, we did, we did conduct a traffic analysis and, you know, the study was done last year right during the heart of the pandemic. So we, we did not conduct new traffic counts, but we were able to obtain counts from the DOT that were done fairly recently in, in 2016. So we, we used those at their recommendation and grew them by a growth rate. So their study's pretty conservative. The study, the traffic study also takes into account that 20% transit credit I discussed earlier due to the excellent access we have to Metro North. And the findings of that traffic study were, really our only recommendations were to optimize the traffic signal timings at the Fort Point and Van Zandt Street intersection, which is close to the site, to help that intersection operate a little bit better. And we also had a recommendation to either remove or relocate a fence that is located along the southern site frontage that's obstructing sight line coming out of the driveway on Van Zandt Street. And, and that was in a brief nutshell, the, the findings of our parking and, and traffic analysis. As Hyrum mentioned, we are in the process of, of sifting through the comments we got from, from the traffic department. And sure, we'll, you know, we'll go through those and address those at the next meeting.
Right. I'd like to note that Commissioner Mancini joined us at 6:20 and I'd like to give Richard an opportunity to ask his question. Richard, you are muted.
I'm embarrassed to ask at this juncture because I'm sure probably was covered, but I did make a specific point at our last meeting that I wanted to see some type of a presentation concerning the state of Connecticut easement. And the part that I was able to hear was that a copy of the deed's going to be, or a copy of the easement's going to be sent to staff tomorrow. Is, is that the latest?
Would you like any response, Mr. Chairman? Sure.
Yes, please.
Yes, we have a, we have a copy of that. It took me a while to get it from DOT, but I'm happy to send that in and it's exactly as we had previously represented. There are about a little over 50 spaces on the north side of this property that encroach into the DOT property and that's what the easement's for. I'm happy to present that and I can have a few tomorrow as soon as my internet comes back at home. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Peck, the, the difficulty is, is that if you're going to present us with a copy of an easement that you received from DOT, there's, there's no way of knowing without a presentation concerning that, that involves a current title search which asks whether that's the present state, but that's, it, it's your presentation to make.
I'm happy, I'm happy to talk to the owner's attorneys and if that information is available to them, I'm sure we'll be happy to present it to you. It's the most recent information. I've had discussions with DOT. The staff can certainly talk to them directly if you want. It just came from them very recently. I believe it's current and accurate and I will check with our attorneys and have that information to you before your next meeting.
Well, I, I think that you will agree based on the questions and the, and the input from the public that the traffic and parking mode is of paramount concern. And I, I just want you to know that I'm not prepared to vote on something just based on a representation that this is the latest.
Understood. We'll have the information to you so you can vote accordingly. Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Virtucci, in the most recent information that was provided to us, it wasn't clear to me, and this may simply just be me, whether more of the rentable space in this project is now planned to be rented than you had originally presented.
Yeah, that, that is one change. Really the two changes were the additional 90 spaces that we took credit for that are available in the lot across the street. And the other change was we added 24,000 square feet of, of leasable area to our analysis. The previous analysis had assumed, I believe it was 202,000 square feet of leasable area. So the, that, that was the difference. There's 24,000 square feet of additional office use that we factored in in this supplemental parking letter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the commissioners regarding TNP or traffic and parking? Okay. Mr. Peck, back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We look forward to presenting you with the information, all the responses to the TNP and DPW letters that we've received, that you're, hopefully next meeting.
Is that the sum of the information for this evening?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Steve, do we need to take a vote on keeping this public hearing open?
No, you can just continue the matter.
Okay. Unless there's an objection from any of the commissioners, I recommend that we hold this open until we can, we can get appropriate answers from the, the applicant on, particularly on the questions that have been raised both by us and by TNP staff. There consensus on that?
I agree. I just hope that we can get this information with enough time to read it before the next meeting.
I, I agree with what Dex had.
That, that, that might be the tricky part is whether we can turn it around in two weeks. That might be the tricky part.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, it, it may be possible, certainly. I check with the owner tomorrow morning. But if you wanted to extend it to four weeks, whatever your next meeting date after that two weeks is, there are a number of issues that we want to address completely and accurately. It may take a little bit longer than two weeks, so, and I do want to get it to you before your meeting, so if that's possible, we'd be happy to stretch it out, whatever extension you may need for that. Happy to work with staff and get that done.
Okay. I appreciate that. Steve, that's the appropriate way to go. They'll work with you on setting the date.
Sure. Yeah, I think maybe we, we can decide going forward if, if they think they're going to be ready for the first October meeting or it'll be the second meeting. So just fashion the extension letter accordingly.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, we've taken action on item 3A by holding the hearing open and Steve and the applicant will set another date once the information is in and we have all had an adequate opportunity to review it. Next item, essentially a discussion item. Oh, I, you know, I should comment on, on this and why I feel the way I do. And that is on the change in the language that would allow this facility to have the vocational trade, trade school. My, my feeling is I don't want to approve that language until we are certain that this project, project is going forward. There certainly will be another opportunity, should it not go forward, to consider it as part of the rewrite of the new regulations. And of course, if it does go forward, we have the opportunity to approve that change in the language the evening that we make that decision. I just don't feel entirely comfortable approving something that we're not absolutely certain is moving forward.
I agree.
Okay. And with that, 2021-33M-R/SP Merit Station Norwalk LLC 6769, 7987, 111, 117, 129, 135, 155, 156, 201 Glover Avenue and 2 Oakwood, Oakwood Avenue. This is an ongoing discussion. This is an ongoing discussion with BLT. And Attorney David Waters is with us tonight to open up that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve, would you like to say anything first, or should I just jump into it?
Oh, no, me, no, go right ahead.
Great, then I will. If you don't mind, I will share my screen. I think. I can find it.
Steve, as Dave's doing that, is our reviewer going to be joining us this evening?
No, I, I hadn't heard, I emailed him a couple of times and have not heard back from him at all. So, but we're going solo tonight.
Okay.
If you'll just wait for a minute, I seem to have dropped it, and I have to pick it back up again. All right, can everybody see that now?
Yeah.
So I thought that it might, it's been a while since we've been in front of the commission, and I thought it might be helpful to just kind of start back and as a refresher as to what we're proposing and where we are. And then there were a couple of items that we wanted to actually discuss with you based upon our discussions with staff. So with that, let me just remind you that what the, the area is that we're talking about is on Glover Avenue. It's the area that you see on the left here that's in the dashed yellow lines. It is located here. This is Merritt 7 over on, to the east of it, and over to the west of it is the Route 7 Expressway. The applications that we have before you, there are three of them that are interrelated. The first one is an application for zone changes. Some of the property that is within the yellow dashed lines is already executive office zone. Some of it is AAA residence zone, and some of it is business to residence zone, or business to zone. And the application is to change all of it to executive office zone. The second application is for a text amendment that would allow for approval of a master plan. Norwalk's regulations don't currently allow for that, but the master plan text amendment would allow that the commission may, under appropriate circumstances, approve a master plan for an area within the executive office zone. And that would be by special permit. Following the special permit approving the master plan, individual buildings would still need to come before the commission on a site plan review basis. And the third application is for the special permit for this master plan. So you have the zone change, the text amendment to allow for a master plan, and then the special permit that would approve this specific master plan. On your right, you see, this is the, the general zoning in the entire area. The, the subject area be in the yellow dash is only a portion of that. It's really this that you see here. But it also, you'll see, it includes and shows all of the rest of the area that is executive office. This dark green area is the area that is the subject of one of the zone change requests, which is from AAA residents to executive office. The area that is in this kind of a pink color is to change that from business to, to executive office. The area is very much a self-contained area. If you look, you'll see that the expressway bounds it to the west. The Gris Mill Road bounds it to the north. On the east, you have Main Avenue, and you also have Merritt 7, which is in its, in essence, part of the area and district, but also is a boundary between the Glover Avenue area and Main Avenue itself. And at the far south, you have the Merritt Parkway. Also of interest and part of the challenge to creating a real community within this district is the fact that the Metro North Danbury branch runs up along this area right here, as does the Norwalk River. And included within this area, within this district, is not just Merritt 7, but also the Towers. And between them, they constitute the premier office space within the city of Norwalk. This is another view, and what it shows is that, again, there's very little that surrounds this district between the fact that you have Merritt 7 over here and the highway over here, and virtually nothing on the other side of the highway. A few single-family houses, the Silvermine Golf Course, but virtually nothing else. The other thing that it also shows, which is important because it ties to our project, is you can see the area where the transmission power lines come down. And this is the area where the Norwalk River Valley Trail will eventually be completed and run between Calf Pastor Beach and Danbury. This area up here is called Will Walk, and it's actually being constructed as we speak. They expect to have that done this year. So, which brings us to the master plan, and this is the same master plan here that we had provided to you a little over a year ago. Basically, what it shows is seven buildings that are located generally, in most cases, on top of parking garages with active uses in front of them. It's primarily residential, about total of 1,300 residential units, if all built according to what is proposed here. There is retail as well of about 28,000 square feet. The retail is shown on the first floor here, the first floor here, and the first floor across here. However, the, the master plan has been designed, so it's really plug and play. So if we got a, an interested party for corporate headquarters, or for a hotel, or something of the sort like that, many of these buildings can be replaced with a different use. This is the master plan. If, if the change in the use were to occur after approval of the master plan, then we would have to come back before the commission in order to obtain approval for that modification. This also shows, again, the location of the NRVT. And it also shows the area, there's a spur of the Norwalk River Valley Trail that comes as part of the approval of the curb. We were required to include this segment, either in constructing it ourselves, which we are doing for this, and pay for this, so that it can connect under the Gris Mill Bridge, the concept being that people will be able to come up here. There are now bike lanes and sidewalks that will bring you down to the train station, and therefore you can connect with an intermodal transportation. We're also proposing to add walking areas. This is Raccoon Brook that runs through here, and this becomes a significant portion of open space with walking areas that would allow to connect up through to the streets above. And another proposed connection here, this one would require the consent of the adjoining property owner to allow that to occur, but it certainly is of benefit to bring people down so that if you're up in this neighborhood and you want to come to the train station, you can come down through here, as opposed to having to walk all the way down Oakwood and then back again. We think that this will help to connect the neighborhood as a unified neighborhood that, that can actually be of benefit to everybody concerned. You'll see also that as we have done up at the curb, there are textured pavement at the intersections, and that's proposed to continue down throughout the site. That helps in traffic calming. It also creates a sense of identity. There are also planted islands, and, and those are in fact in place now up at the curb. And those will, to the extent that it's feasible to do that within the right-of-way, will be continued down through the site as well. The whole design of the streets is, is a complete street concept with parking, but also bike lanes, sidewalks, appropriate lighting, and, and the same. The train station is also shown in this location. This is not the existing train station location, which is actually much farther down. It's about here. This is the new train station, which is actually under construction right now. So if we can move on in a different depiction, this shows you in more of a 3D what our proposal has been and what it continues to be with some modifications. We have five-story buildings in this area, which is around the train station and this square, which we'll talk about in just a minute. We have 11 stories on either side of it. This moves up to 14, and these are 15. And we've shown you alternatives which would show you that we could in fact do 11-story buildings, which is permitted under the existing regulations. But it would mean that you would have longer buildings that are slightly shorter. The slight difference in height is actually not overly noticeable, but it would certainly make a fairly significant change in what you can see through the buildings. When we talk also about the number of stories as we're proposing it here, we're talking about it as true stories. So it means from ground level. The zoning regulations allow, and both Merritt 7 and the Towers took advantage of, the ability to measure stories from the plaza level when seeking zoning compliance. So the, the Towers are buildings of seven and eight stories by zoning. In fact, if you go out and look at it from Glover Avenue, they're 13 stories because there's five stories of parking that is beneath the plaza level, but those don't count on a zoning basis. So when we talk here about this being a 14-story building, it's not 14 stories from the podium level, it's 14 stories from ground level. Looking specifically at the phase or the beginning or the neighborhood number one, this again is the train station. It will have a pedestrian bridge over to Merritt 7, which is actually a very positive thing for both Merritt 7 and for us, because it allows people to actually walk, which currently they can't do. It will also allow people to at Merritt 7 to actually walk to the train platform, which currently they cannot do. This creates a town square. We again have retail that is in the base of this building, retail that is in the base of this building, and access which we propose up to Oakwood in this particular case. And it becomes the center of the community in that respect. The retail that is proposed and contemplated for this is not going to be destination retail. You're not going to see Walmart or a, or a, anything of the sort where it's people that are going there for a particular store. It's really meant to be supportive retail, which is going to be a coffee shop, perhaps a bank branch, perhaps a, a dry cleaner, things of the sort that really are supportive of the people that are living and working within the neighborhood already. It really doesn't warrant trying to attract people in because people just won't come in off of Main Avenue. It, from experience, I can tell you that that's one of the struggles that Wilton Center has, because Wilton Center is not located on Route 7. So moving just slightly north of that, we then come to buildings 2.1, 2.2, and 2.3, which is the neighborhood 2, as it was depicted. Building 2.1 is an important building for an additional reason beyond the retail that runs along its front, and that is that we will have 83 parking spaces for commuters within the garage beneath this building. When the DOT came in, they originally wanted to take the land that's right in this area to create an on-grade parking area so that they would be able to have a total of approximately 200 parking spaces, which fits the parameters of what they would normally want for a train station facility. We were successful in negotiating with them that while they can put the property or the parking on grade, and in fact, if you drive out there today, you'll see that they are preparing it to be on grade. We also felt that a on-grade parking lot was not conducive to a real neighborhood. And so we were able to negotiate with them that we could place the parking within a garage as long as it is separately accessed, and they can control those spaces the way that they would an on-grade lot. And they agreed to that. So this building has been designed so that there is commuter parking in a separate level all by itself. The, which brings us to buildings 2.2 and 2.3.
David, can I go back to 2.1?
Sure.
You said that Condot would like 200 parking spaces, but you're only providing 80.
They have others already, Lou, on the, down below. And actually, where the current parking, where the current train station platform or lack of platform is, that will become a parking area. So they already have parking. This supplements that so that they get up to approximately 200 parking spaces.
Thank you.
So the, which brings us to 2.2 and 2.3. When we submitted our application to the commission, the commission then retained DeCarlo and Dahl to, to do an analysis of the master plan and their thoughts about it. And as part of that, they, they provided you with some recommendations as to where they thought things might be modified in a way that, that would be beneficial. And, and one of the things that they looked at was this particular area, this building 2.2, 2.3, and the area in front of it. We had contemplated that this would essentially become, you know, kind of a great lawn. And they felt, and came up with a few conclusions that they felt could be treated differently. Among those were that they felt that we could and perhaps should redesign and relocate the buildings to create a street presence that reflects the geometry of the street in this location, rather than being set back the way that it is, and to relocate the mass of the buildings towards Glover Avenue. They felt that we should modify the footprint of the buildings to increase the open space in proximity to Raccoon Brook up in this area. They also felt that we should create additional retail space to maximize the street-facing retail and to create more activity on the first floor of, of the buildings along the street. And they suggested that potentially a second node of, of activity could be placed someplace in that, at the point where this corner occurs. So we went back and we talked to our consultants about that and what they might design in order to do that. And they came up with a proposal that looks like this. And what we've done here is we've basically split the parking from the active uses of the building. So this is all on grade, where it says outdoor plaza. This is a parking garage, which is actually backed into the slope at this point. So there's a fill and, and into the slope, which goes up rather significantly in this location. So the parking garage is basically half-buried. What you see in front, this area and this area of green are now retail space. And these kind of golden color things are the buildings that sit on top of this one store, oversized one-story first floor. And they are where all of the residential buildings are currently, with a connector at ground level between them as an entrance and another plaza that can be used as a center for activity that is in front. What's important to see and how, again, how we addressed some of these things, the, again, the comment was redesign to create a street presence. So we've now brought, this was, this dotted line here was the footprint of the original 2.2 and 2.3. And you can see that we've now brought the building out to the street. And create and follow the geometry of the street. We've increased the open space. You can see again, the dotted line here is the building and then you can see above and around it is the area where the parking, where the driveway went for that building. We've now significantly reduced that so that there is more open space that is part of the Raccoon Brook uh park. And that again, a reminder is open to the public. We've created the additional retail space and I'll show you in a minute what the first floor looks like. So that in fact, you now have a continuous retail uh potential all the way from the very southern tip up to here. And we've created another focus for people to gather.
Attorney Waters, a couple of questions on that. Can you stay there for a moment?
Sure.
Mm hmm. Um. So uh what what you're do, what you're saying is those two linear uh outdoor plazas are open space. But they're hidden behind building two point two and building two point three, are they not?
That's correct. They, this would be private open space for the residents of those buildings as opposed to public open space for, you know, the public itself. It also fits nicely because you've you've got the parking areas here, a connector to get to the buildings here. Uh, and this, as you'll see in just a minute with the first floor, this is potentially a location for an indoor pool on the ground floor. So it it allows for that outdoor plaza outside of an indoor pool. Uh, the ability to have that type of amenity space that is private amenity space as opposed to the public amenity space.
And how large is that? Public amenity space, the one out in front of those two buildings.
Well, this now becomes much less than it was before because well, it it's all public. Because it is uh because it's along the road and it's where the sidewalk is and it's where the retail is and you've now created another probably hundred by a hundred foot uh area that is this outdoor plaza as well. But what you've also
Quarter, quarter of an acre.
Um, roughly that, yes. But what you've also created is another acre of land up in this area that was not part of uh the public open space before.
You. Quick question. You mentioned part of this was to attach it to the wetlands. So what's the amount of space or acreage that's connected to that? Cause I'm seeing still a street that's kind of disrupting the flow of that green space and and would this parking be on grade? So a giant parking seat of cars.
Parking that the parking is a four-story parking garage.
Right.
It's uh, I think the answer to your question is probably more easily seen here. So this is Raccoon Brook as it comes up through. And this area, and you again, you can see that this is the 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 one acre additional that did not previously exist. But this entire area is part of the open park. That now, as we had proposed, we also proposed to connect a walking trail on state property that would connect over to here as well. So this whole area is public open space. Uh, and that currently doesn't exist.
Did you share this?
Just to uh Marcela, please.
I just wanted to know if you had new proposal from your consultants with the group that suggested the changes in the first place.
We have and now if I can get to that in just a minute, that that I will if if I if you'll beg my indulgence for just a minute. Any other questions before I move on from this slide?
Yeah, just, just so I the building here and I'm looking at obviously you have the retail space in two point two and two point three with the residential behind it. In terms of just if people are coming to go use these retail facilities. How much parking will they have access to? If obviously the residents, of course, are going to want to be able to park where they live. Um, you know, I I guess the, you know, and I guess remind me uh because I forgot how many apartment units you're planning on putting in in this in this space and sort of what's the, what is the overall parking situation here? If you just I don't know if you have this yet, but you know, in terms of just the breakdown.
We do in in rough numbers. Um, first of all, the total number of units is is thirteen hundred. The amount that is within this particular building is my recollection is about six hundred or no, five hundred. Um. The there is parking that first of all, there's what's uh intended to be the convenient parking, which will be along the street, just as there is currently north of here at the curb. In addition to that, there will be uh parking that is within the building. So for example, you can see here uh for building two point one. You have the commuter parking that goes in here and that goes down into into the lower grade. And that's dedicated and only to it. Over here you have parking that is entry to both the retail and the residence. So you've got a retail space that's across the front of this building. Behind that is the parking for retail. Otherwise you would continue in and you'd go up to the upper levels, which is where the residents will be parking. Similarly with this, and we haven't gotten, I mean, all of that, this is still subject to future refinement, which will come when we do site plan applications themselves. But again, the concept is that there will be parking that is available for retail as well, although we frankly don't think that there's a huge amount of retail that uh that needs to be parked because again, most of it is going to be from the neighborhood itself.
Well, then what kind of retailer are you planning on putting in then? If that if that's the case, then are you talking about it being a grocery store that people in the area are going to use? Or are you talking about like? You know, what kind of retailer are you envisioning for this five?
We're we're envisioning that it's probably going to be more supportive. It's going to be things as a like coffee shops, a bank branch, a dry cleaner, things that people are going to go to either on their way to the train station or on their way home from the train station or because they're it live in the area and they're just popping in to get something uh on their way either out in the morning or or back in the evening type of thing. Or because they're at merit seven and they are taking a walk and they just want to go across and get and perhaps a slice of pizza or something of the sort like that.
Okay, but it's not going to be like, there's not like a destination retail kind of thing like, you know, uh, like essentially like a sono collection or something along those lines.
No, it it is absolutely most emphatically not going to be destination retail. Uh. I it it would not make a lot of sense anyway, um, but to try and encourage people to come back onto Glover Avenue from Main Avenue or whatever is is almost impossible as well. And and we we know that from our own experience here in Stanford with with our retail that's in the base of our buildings.
How about restaurants? Will there be restaurants beyond just a coffee shop or a place where you get a slice of pizza?
That's quite possible. Uh, I'd like to think that there will be. Uh, part of the part of the issue with any kind of retail is just critical mass that until unless you have a critical mass of clientele. It's very difficult to have any of it survive, and we've seen that here as well. Uh, in our particular case, I think that, you know, the concept is that it would be nice to have a a nice restaurant that is there and that that would be perhaps the exception on a de- destination uh retail, but it would be a relatively minor one in the scheme of things. It would not be something to rival Stop and Shop or uh discount liquor down the street. Um, but but it certainly would be uh uh something that uh we would like to see as an amenity for uh for the area and for the neighborhood, if if that's something that that can be supported.
And and just to put a capstone on this and I'm I don't mean to sort of take over too much here, but just to say that um in this particular section of the complex, I remember when this when when you guys first came to the commission about a little over a year ago, there was a broader concept of having it be, you know, retail, residential and office space. I haven't heard you talk about office space or or any kind of business use. Um, I'm wondering if that's just because this portion of the project is not where that's going to be, or have you kind of changed tack?
No, in fact, I in in fact, we we may have misled you on that. Uh, I don't think so, but uh, office has not been a part of this as a primary component from day one. We've always said that again, if if we had a an Amazon that wanted to come in and put their corporate headquarters there or something of the sort like that. That's where the plug and play comes into play and we would be able to to pivot around to be able to use one of the pad sites, whether it's two point two and two point three, or whether it's three point one and three point two. Uh, something like that. And we could certainly do that and make that into an office building, but the concept has always been uh residential primarily with retail as a supportive. And part of that is because we view uh this as not just our master plan area, but the community also includes merit seven and the towers. And between the two of them, there's two million square feet of office of class A office space that's already within this neighborhood. So we're actually creating the complementary use of retail uh and or and residential right now.
Thank you.
So this again is just a quick sketch of how that commercial space works. The indoor pool and amenity areas and how that would relate to the outdoor plaza. More commercial space here and in this particular design, the concept of bringing a couple of residential units down to ground level as well, so that it just again creates a new interest and a fully active front on all of uh this property.
Attorney Waters, I have um an enormous number of questions about this, but let me put those aside for a moment. Um. Uh, any development of any significant size on Glover is still going to require um the uh state projects uh to ease traffic. Uh, the um, the interchange um um the um uh and the other, the other, the other two projects uh that are required. Um, given uh the federal infrastructure uh bill. Uh, and I assume the state wants any number of shovel-ready projects uh to take advantage of the those infrastructure dollars. What if anything are you uh doing with the state to make those projects as shovel-ready as possible? So that when the money becomes available, uh, the state is ready to move forward uh with those traffic problems.
I, Mr. Schulman, if I can, I'll I'll answer your question immediately now, but I'm, we're going to get to the traffic piece in just a minute. Uh, and and I can certainly talk more about those projects then, but the simple answer is we are working very heavily with the governor and with the state uh on pushing these projects uh so that they can move forward because the governor recognizes that they are also uh really important projects to the economic uh uh condition of Norwalk and of the area. Because these projects, this residential, this live, work, play environment is critical to sustaining merit seven and the towers as the class A buildings that they are and attracting the kinds of tenants that we really want to get. Uh, the currently uh, these types of corporations are looking for places where they can get employees who enjoy living and working in the same neighborhood, who want to be able to walk to work, things like that. So all of that is very important and it's one of the reasons that we've been pushing this and the governor has has been recognizing it as well. The flip side to that is that the they also look at it and say, yes, but you're not ready yet to with your approvals to to build these buildings. So tell us why we should justify putting the uh economic resources into this when these buildings aren't ready to be built yet. So it's kind of a, it's chicken and egg situation as far as that is concerned uh as well. But uh, just to uh, and again, I'll get to the traffic improvements themselves in just a minute. But the the one set of improvements is in process of being reviewed with NEPA SEPA and they expect that the Route seven, Route fifteen improvements will start in twenty twenty-five. So that's literally around the corner in the scheme of things.
Thank you.
So what you now have with just to kind of summarize where we are on the uh revisions to this, you now will have retail that is in this location here along here, along here and along here. So you've now created that street presence. One of the things your consultants recognized and and pointed out and we knew as well is that it's rather difficult to create a street presence here because only one side of the street has any active uses. Uh, the other side is the train station, but then after that, it's just the train tracks moving up the up north to Wilton. So you can't have dynamic activity on both sides of the street, and that means that the types of things that we can do over here are that much more important. So that gives you, we had shown you a block diagram. This gives you kind of the envisioning of the other thing. You can see a bit of the garage behind it. These are the two buildings. This is the retail that's in front with the plaza in front of that. This, of course, you know, looks like it's a no man's land, but in fact, this is where the sidewalks, the street trees, the the uh, the green space, the snow shelf, all of the rest of it go as well as the storefronts. So we expect that this will all be quite active space. So. At this point, uh, we had taken this proposal and suggested uh process and concept uh to your staff and and to DeCarlo and Doll. And uh, they reviewed it and we've had a couple of discussions with them since. DeCarlo and Doll felt that with this building in particular, there should be because of where it's located and what have you, that there should be a wow factor, as they called it. Uh, I would kind of point out the fact that again, this is a block diagram. It's not architecturally designed. It doesn't have any of the intricacies or or interesting features that you would see in a specific building. Uh, but certainly it would not look like this. Uh, but that being said, they suggested that perhaps this should this as a building should become a signature building that is taller and thinner. Um, this is a fifteen-story building. So I'm not sure that there is any, and we asked uh your staff and and them to Carlo and Doll, whether they thought that it was uh, there was any tolerance to going more than fifteen stories in this location. Uh, we're certainly willing to consider it if if that is what the commission feels would be an appropriate direction to go. But frankly, I'm not sure that Norwalk is ready for a twenty-five or thirty-story building. Uh, if if that was the signature building that was being suggested. Um, so we're again, we're kind of in front of you on a discussion basis. I I don't know, Steve, if you want to add anything to to the process and the comments that we've had, but I think that this is something that we kind of need to know uh what direction uh the the commission favors in in particular without, obviously without any commitment on it.
Uh, unfortunately, Steve's away for about ten minutes.
Okay. Then maybe we can come back and address that when he gets back. I, but because I do want to get to the uh, to the other piece, which is uh, we move on to to Lou, your question, which was on traffic. So. Um. What? As again, going back to what our total uh project entails. Seven buildings as currently proposed, thirteen hundred units. Uh, about twenty-eight thousand. Now it would be more than that square feet of retail, uh, because there's now be more retail that will be in this location as well. But we also recognized, um, a- as you had mentioned, uh, Mr. Schulman, that um there's no question that in order to build that entire development, there are improvements that must be made. We've submitted uh a traffic analysis that indicates that if those or when those uh improvements are made that there will be adequate capacity, not only for the existing uh needs of the area, but also for this particular improvement as well. Uh, so it's just a question of when those get done uh and and how that affects the timing of this project. So we've talked with your staff about the idea of uh phasing it. So before we get into what the phasing would be. So before we get into what the phasing would be. Uh, there are, as, as you had alluded to, there are two significant projects, there's three, the, the first one being the train station, the train station is. Currently under construction, so we don't have to debate as to whether that's going to be done or when it's going to be done, my understanding, it's, it's supposed to be completed in the spring of. Uh, twenty twenty two uh in its entirety, which means not just the uh, the platforms and what have you, but all of the. Uh, the parking and the associated uh infrastructure that goes with it. But there are two other significant projects uh that the state has on its horizon. Uh, that will have a significant impact, and as I said, once completed will actually alleviate. All issues as far as they're related to the existing conditions and and future. The first one is down here, which is where the Route seven expressway and the Merritt Parkway uh intersect. And down in this area, which is where Main Avenue and the Merritt Parkway intersect, as well as where the south end of Glover comes in. The state has on, in its plans, a full interchange, and there are a couple of different alternatives as to how they do that, but uh, there, uh. They have uh, under consideration, uh, full interchange, so that you'll be able to go in all different directions, currently you can't. Uh, you know, you, you can go uh southbound on Route seven, uh, and then go. Uh, west or south on the Merritt Parkway, but you can't go north on the Merritt Parkway. Uh, and similarly, you can go north uh on merits on, on the seven, Route seven expressway. And come around to get onto the southbound uh Merritt Parkway, but you can't go northbound, so. That's part of the whole thing, and that will alleviate a significant amount of the uh issues. It also will improve this area down here uh around one Glover and where Glover Avenue comes out to Main Avenue. That project is on the books, it is, as I said, going through NIPA SEPA right now, it is expected that it will uh be. Uh, under construction in twenty twenty five, uh, and it's a several year project, as you can imagine. The other project is up at the other end. And we've been working with the state on redesigning this whole intersection here. Right now you have two three-way T intersections, so the Route seven expressway comes up and it ends. At Grist Mill and Glover Avenue comes up and it ends at Grist Mill, so you have two separate. Uh, lights before you get down to the light at Main Avenue. In working with them, what we have proposed and and been working to uh, uh, get accomplished. Is to reconfigure that into one four-way intersection, so the expressway instead of coming up and ending at a T. Will actually come up and then curve down. To Main Avenue, so that, that's two of the legs, the third leg would be that Glover Avenue would then come up to meet that curve. And Grist Mill in this direction would come down to meet that curve, so that you would end up with one four-way intersection. And the state agrees that that is a feasible and prudent uh method of doing this. What they are also holding up to deal with is the fact that once you make it easier to get through this area. It pushes more pressure down to this area. And they would like to make sure that this area is actually cleared out first, it's like the, the python that swallowed the elephant that. You know, the, 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 the impediment only goes so far and then it gets stuck again. So in this particular case, what they would like to see is they would like to see this area fixed first. So that then when the traffic can freely flow down through here, it doesn't get caught down here as well. So they are in the process of working their way through the design on that. Uh, and again, it is something that they're very seriously involved in. Uh, but they do not have a date certain yet as to when they would move forward with it. Again, part of that is they're looking at us and say, show us, you know, it's, does it work now? Yeah, it's, everybody can live with it, but show us that you're going to be building something and then we can justify putting a lot of money into doing this type of project. So that's where we are with that. So going back to our plan. We asked our traffic consultant and specifically um Fussin O'Neil. To look at phasing the project, if we were to phase the implementation of the master plan. Uh, how could we do that? And what we proposed was that the first three buildings, one point one, one point two and two point one. Would be phase one, the reason for that is because of the train station. We know that this is a focal point, we want this to be the center of the community, these two buildings make the most sense to do that. But this building does too, because it's also the parking area. And we want to be able to establish this as the center with the, with the parking and with the train station. And and be done with that particular piece of it, so what that would entail in, in a, in our contemplated phase one. Is five hundred residential units out of the thirteen hundred. And it would include the twenty eight thousand square feet of retail that is in this building, this building and this building. So we asked Fussin O'Neil to look at that and see what they would, uh, whether that would work based upon the existing conditions. And the existing capacities, we discussed and we discussed with your staff, the concept that. Buildings two point two and two point three would be a phase two and three point one and three point two would be a phase three. And frankly, I mean, what we had proposed was, and and I think we were all on the same um page on, is that two point one or two point two and two point three. Would be dependent upon the completion of the Route seven, Route fifteen Merritt Parkway, Main Avenue uh improvements. That we would not be able to move forward until those were underway, at least if not completed. And similarly, that this phase, phase three, would be dependent upon the improvements to be made at the north end of things. Uh, between the Grist Mill realignment and then Route seven moving north into Wilton. So we asked um Mark Vertucci, our, our consultant, to, to look at. Uh, our phase one and just our phase one, what, what would be the impact if we were to do that? And we've submitted that report to uh your staff and and I'm sure that it will be made available to you. But what it says, what he concluded specifically was. Uh, and we talked not only at level of service, but we also talked in what's the practical impact, because I think that that makes it easier to understand. And what he said was that it, the capacity analysis revealed that none of the study intersections approaches will experience any noticeable increase in delay. This is again, remember, just phase one. As a result of the proposed development traffic and none of the intersections sustain a significant increase in the volume to capacity ratio. The additional trips generated by the proposed development will also result in no noticeable change in existing queues. One vehicle length or less at most intersection approach lanes on the state and local roadway. Q length increases of two to five vehicle lengths in peak hours. Will be experienced on the Route seven expressway northbound right turn lane approach. Uh, to Grist Mill Road and the Glover northbound left turn approach to Grist Mill Road. However, ample queue storage exists on both intersection approaches to accommodate the queue entry in that queue increases. So what that means, again, going back to the picture, wrong way, sorry. Is that? This in, this turn, which is coming up. The expressway to turn right will be two to five additional. Car lengths at the peak hour and this movement coming up Glover to turn left. Onto Grist Mill would be up to two to five car lengths in queue length at the peak hour. But that all of the other intersections throughout the study area would be one car length or less. We also asked him to look at this as part of his analysis and we asked him to exclude. The retail, and you may say, well, why would you do that? The I T E manual requires that you take all of your various uses and include all of them and put them together and then figure out your demand from there. But as we were just talking, we think that the vast majority of the uh. Traffic that will be generated for the retail is actually traffic that's already on the street. It's either traffic that is there for the residential or it's traffic that will be there for the new residential. Or it's traffic that is there for the office uses that are on Glover. Or it's traffic that is there because they're going to the train station and they're picking up a cup of coffee on their way to go to the train station. Uh, but not uh specifically going to this coffee shop, uh, because it's, it's not frankly in the, in, in the way. So we've given you both of those and you'll see both tables. Both with the retail and without the retail, because it, the truth probably lies somewhere between the two. Um, again, that analysis has been provided to uh your staff, it's been provided to T and P. Uh, it's been provided to DeCarlo and Doll. And it's also been provided to Osta so that they can perform their uh scoping review. Now, we know that Osta will not render a formal approval of anything until after the municipality is, has done their thing. But uh, again, we've presented it to them, they've agreed already with our methodology of doing this uh process, so it's just a matter of. Uh, having them do their scoping review. So I know that uh Steve had mentioned in the staff report that uh, this is still under review. Um, internally by the city, uh, but we wanted you to be aware of it and what the process was and what our thought process was in, in providing it to you.
Attorney, Attorney Waters, a, a couple of uh comments, um, first of all, um. Uh, I, I, uh, Steve is back, by the way. Uh, I, I'm going to disagree with you on those uh improvements to Grist with Grist Mill. Um, and Glover, um. Uh, I think if we have the political juice, they can be made to happen.
I would like to think so.
It happens, it happens all the time, uh, though mostly in the Hartford area. And, excuse me, other areas of the state. Uh, where they're better able to uh, uh, exercise uh their political will. Um, however, uh, we have a major developer in uh your firm. Uh, we, we have Senator Bob Duff. Um, uh, who, who carries a fair amount of uh influence. Uh, we, we, we certainly have a mayor who's uh anxious to see um, uh, strong development. Uh, respo- strong responsible development move forward. Um, I, I, I can't believe that with those players, we can't bring enough. Um, um, political power to bear. Um, to make something happen short of our being frankly forced. Uh, into uh approving something uh that we may not be prepared to uh approve just yet. Um, so I would uh, uh, suggest uh that uh the most serious effort to be made to make that happen. Uh, if members of the zoning commission can uh assist in that effort in any way. Uh, we would certainly uh be happy uh to do that, as I, I think we've said uh before. Uh, uh, this, this project uh both delights us and frightens us. Uh, the scale, the scale is a little bit frightening, um. Um, um, but um, uh, it, um. Um, it holds, uh, it seems to me, um, uh, has a lot of uh potential positive uh. Uh, impacts for the city, uh, if we can get it right, and I think to get it right. Uh, means uh, taking our, our uh, uh, time and holding more discussions like this. Um, uh, the other thing that uh, uh, concerns me is you're, you're asking a lot of the city, you're asking a lot of the. Uh, zoning commission, but you're not giving back a lot. Uh, outside of any uh e- economic benefits to the city, you're not giving back a lot to the city. Uh, the uh open uh space for the public. Um, e- except for the residents, uh, it seems to me is just too modest. And needs to be expanded, uh, there needs to be more available. Uh, open space for uh community use. And while I know you're not at a point where you're doing any design, serious design work. Um, I, 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 I think you need to start uh talking uh in terms of um. Uh, doing uh some eco-friendly uh development, and I know you, you haven't dismissed it. Um, but I, 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 I think it ne- needs to start to come to the, to the forefront.
I couldn't agree with more with what Louis just said.
So I, tho- those are some of my thoughts on this, but I think uh, the first i- i- is to bring pressure to bear on the state.
And I, and I will, I, I will assure you that that is happening and has been happening and. From your lips to Hartford and Weathersfield's ear, uh, we absolutely agree.
Um, I think, you know, th- th- this may even be an area where. Uh, our congressman and at least one of our senators might have an interest as, as well, I mean, as you know. Uh, this, this part of the state uh plays, pays a very disproportionate amount of. Uh, state income tax and um, gets back. Um, uh, dispropat- uh proportionately small uh amount of uh that state tax.
And a lot of the tax that uh is paid is paid from uh the tenants, the commercial tenants that are right in this area.
Absolutely.
And it's important to keep those tenants. I guess I'm.
It is very important to keep those tenants that, you know, that's, that's the thing that we struggle with every day. Uh, and, and, you know, we and, and Merritt seven, uh, because they have choices and. And we want to make it so that they say, this is the place we want to be. Uh, that, that it has the opportunities, that it has the enticements, um, that it's just a really great location. Uh, that Norwalk is a really great location uh to be able to live, work, play.
Yeah.
That, that sounds like another uh political partner we need to bring into this battle.
Well, it is, but it also, we don't want to over, over correct, I think. You know, we need to be aware that for sooner rather than later, these, these. Attendants and Merritt seven really want to see. You know, a residential and retail development of this sort. Because it makes their office space much more attractive.
Yes.
So we have to just be aware of that, I believe.
I also want to just circle back what Louis said about eco-development and and showing that this is a. You know, forward thinking, sort of landmark project in this city. Means that there really does need to be an environmental component here, and that's to show. You know, that's to show, you know, residents and citizens, you know, young and old, especially those who are. You know, and people who really care about, you know, I mean, look, I mean, there are areas of the city that were flooded last night. You know, and I think that, you know, showing that they're showing that our could be a model and you guys could be a model. Of, you know, environmentally sustainable construction for the long term, um, something that's definitely important to us, and I know that. Um, Nick Cantor, who isn't here tonight and usually is uh, uh, very upfront about this issue, I, I, I'm not speaking on his behalf, but I'm sure he's. Uh, with me in spirit on this one. Um, so, so this is definitely top of mind for us.
Yeah, I agree with you too, uh, Josh, absolutely.
And I think that's linked to your, your commercial tenants, so you're saying work with, but it, you know, it ultimately. That only happens if your commercial tenants want to live in the residential unit and there's some connection there. And fundamentally, the new consumer is looking for responsible development and net zero projects. And I, I just, the, the parking, the amount of parking. the amount of parking is seems to be always the deciding factor in how decisions are made, and I would suggest thinking about the day-to-day experience beyond parking. If you really wanna track both residents and retain commercial tenants.
I'm not sure I exactly understood that.
I think you should really focus on how, not the street curves, but how you connect both the commercial tenants who can benefit from it and the residential customers you'll have in the future.
And I will tell you, yeah, I will tell you that we do that on, we have a very affirmative process of working with our commercial tenants, because we own the towers down at the south end of, of Glover. And working with them as far as the ability to, a number of them have employees that are at the curb. So you're, you're going from the towers that are down at the south end of Glover up to the curb, which is at the north end of Glover. Frankly, one of the, one of our largest sources of, of tenants for these buildings is ASML in Wilton, who is probably one of the most eco-friendly of all, other than perhaps Cannondale Bikes, which is just up further up here. ASML is one of the more eco-friendly companies as well, and, and we've been working very carefully with them too.
Steve, do you wanna add your voice?
Sure, sorry, I had to step out for another meeting for a second. If there are specific questions you might have had or something that came up in the, in Attorney Waters' presentation, I, I can definitely address those. A couple of things that I, I, you touched on the traffic components of it, and I don't know if you talked about the, the potential phasing of any kind of approvals and having those different sections, whether it's northern, middle and southern be contingent on completion of certain DOT projects. That's one thing we, Attorney Waters and I had had discussions with online, with the understanding that, you know, that some of these projects, even if some things move forward, are still gonna take a little bit of time to, to complete even once they start. The one area that Attorney, Bob Griswitz, who was helping the city with the design review and planning part of this, we had met with Attorney Waters and, and some members of their team a couple of weeks back. And a couple of things that we had talked about were, was the kind of that, I think it's 2.1 and, or is it 2.2 and 2.3, kind of the middle buildings there? Yeah, that, that, and, and Bob had thought, and, and, sorry, my dog's about to bark here, and talked about maybe there being like a taller tower at that location closer to the street, which could allow that less of a kind of a linear facade for the condo owners or apartment owners to the rear of, of this development. And then maybe that would also afford the ability to bring that parking and the development further closer to Glover Avenue, which could also expand, expand the raccoon of Brook area. The other thing to just touch on, and then I'll, I'm happy to answer any questions that Mr. Goldstein had mentioned about the, you know, sustainability and green aspects. I, I, I think, and it's been a little while since I looked at the proposed regulations for this, but staff had recommended LID requirements and other things as part of any approval for this. I'll, I'm happy to resend the link out to the, that language, so you can take a look at it, but I, I know we had talked about this kind of being kind of like an eco-development or an eco-project, and that was kind of, I, I think Attorney Waters had agreed to, at least conceptually to that as more like, at least, at the very least from a marketing standpoint, I think, you know, in line with what they were thinking. Yeah, we had, in fact, had a number of comments and, and had discussed a number of techniques that, that could be included within the requirements.
Attorney Waters, if you don't mind, obviously, we've, we've touched on a number of issues tonight. You know, primarily, of course, we've been spending a lot of time talking about traffic and the sort of the catch 22, or, or as you call it, sort of chicken and egg situation between the state and municipal commissions and bodies, including our own. I'm wondering though, I'm taking just, in terms of the, I don't see anything that's sort of written that sort of outlines where you are now, what you need in the future, you know, a- and, and sort of what's pending and what's not. Because with a project as big as this, obviously, we're getting a lot of this verbally, but I, I, and I, you know, Steve, obviously, I didn't sort of see that in your memo, and not that it's expected to be in your memo. But I think sort of a, a checklist and sort of a, you know, an action list of sort of what's happening and what's not happening may be helpful here, considering where, considering what Louis, you know, was talking about earlier about, you know, trying to, you know, get a lot of our, you know, political leaders, you know, involved here. I just, I just don't see anything in writing sort of outlining essentially, you know, what the next, what the next steps are, where you are with Osta, you know, and, and, you know, what they've represented to you. I mean, obviously, a lot of this is sort of secondhand, thirdhand, but I don't see sort of a documented history of what's going on here.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone else is with me on this one or not, but that's just a thought that came to mind.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
So Steve, the only other, the, we did talk about our proposed design or redesign of 2.2, 2.3, and we talked about the, the concept that your consultants had talked about, you know, potentially a taller building. I expressed to the commission that I have some concern about taller than 15 stories, which is what we currently are dealing with, and whether that would potentially, first of all, whether there's a tolerance on the commission for something over 15 stories, but second of all, whether that would potentially create another set of interested persons off-site based upon the fact that they'll be able to see it. But again, I, I, we're willing to, to explore an alternative if, if people think that that's a viable alternative. I, I don't wanna just go through an exercise, however.
Well, Attorney Waters, I'm not sure that making a building taller makes it stand out. I, I think it's the architecture, and I think it is worth investing in high-quality architecture in order to make that your statement building. I don't think it's related to the height. It's related to the look of the building.
First of all, to be very clear, at the, at the time that, these are again, for conceptual purposes for a master plan. It's not the actual site plan review that would occur with each building. And certainly, we do understand that at the time that we come in, there, there will be the, your usual expected architectural details, colors, shapes. It's not going to be a flat building the way you see it and things like that. And we do expect that it will be high quality, especially with the size and, and, and height of buildings that we're talking about here. They do need to be important buildings, because we need to be able to have people that are interested in renting them, among other things. But beyond that, again, I'm, if you say that, okay, you know, if, if it's a nice building and we think that it looks good and what have you, that we're, would be willing to go to 25, 30 stories, then I'm fine with that. I just wanna make sure that, that, that we're not assuming something that may not be true.
I think height is an impediment. There are gonna be enough people who are gonna complain about what's permitted as of right. Going higher is only going to give them more ammunition.
So then, I, I think what I'm hearing is that don't go beyond the, the, the height that we've already proposed, but you gotta make it look good.
That's what you're hearing from me.
Yes, I understand, I understand, and I understand that it's not a commitment either. Understood. Unless anybody else has anything, that, that was our, the, our intent was to bring you up to speed, kind of remind you of the project, talk about the potential phasing and, and the, the traffic analysis that has been submitted to you with, with our contemplated phase one, and to talk about buildings 2.2 and 2.3. So I, I think from our perspective, we've, we've accomplished what we hope to tonight. And we would like to make sure that we move this thing along. So we understand that there are concerns about the traffic and the status of that. I certainly wanna talk with your staff about making sure that over the last year or plus, that there has been modifications to the proposed amendment and things like that. So we wanna make sure that we're all on the same page on, on what those are. I would remind everyone that when we initially submitted this application, we also submitted, because, among other things, the plan of conservation and development had just been approved, we did submit an analysis as to how the project is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. We also submitted an economic analysis, which has been updated in response to some questions that have been raised from time to time as well. And we submitted a drainage and utility analysis to show that capacity does exist for what we're proposing. So again, all of these are things that we'll, we'll dust off and, but I wanted to remind you that those resources are available and have been part of the application.
Steve, I would suggest, since Marcella is new, particularly the analysis, the, the financial analysis, the impact on the school system, the water system, and the other city systems that were provided early on in this process should be shared with her if she doesn't already have them, so that she has a fuller understanding of some of these issues.
Thank you, Commissioner Lewis, and, and, and I can come back with, I think, some more substantive suggestions.
I can send the link out tomorrow to, to those documents, just to point them out to everybody again.
I think this has been helpful, and I, I, I think it has helped to move us forward. It's, it's helped to clarify further. We're not prepared to approve this at our next meeting. But, but we, but I think we are getting closer.
Great, well, thank you. I, I, again, we appreciate the attention and the time that you guys have put into this. It's, it's certainly been a long project and, and Commissioner Shulman, as you've said, that it's a big and significant project, we do need to get it right. And, and we think that we're getting there, so. We did way back when, talk about a joint hearing at some juncture when you're ready with the planning commission, because obviously there are referrals that they need to act on in terms of the map amendments and the regulation amendments. So that would be kind of, once, once you're at the stage, I don't, maybe that's the next step is coming back at a certain point to say, okay, now we're ready to go to hearing, and then set that hearing date, I think would be the next step. I think maybe Attorney Waters and I would have to have a conversation about what we think is, still needs to be submitted and vetted before it gets to the commission level, but I think those are next steps as I see it.
Great. To, to end this on a positive note, a- a- as far as I can see, I don't think that the map amendments are controversial. And I don't think there's any need for AAA zoning in that area, for example. So I, that may be, you know, you talk about taking some positive steps, that might be something we could consider sooner rather than later.
Agreed.
Well, thank you again for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Waters.
All right. Let's move up to review an action on a new application, 2021-34, modification 149 Westport Avenue, modification to existing special permit 14-08 to allow for seasonal tent sales for Leslie Poole's. Report and recommend, recommended action. Steve, you wanna give us an update on that?
I can do it, Lou. I have Diane on who's representing Leslie Poole's, but it's a pretty straightforward ask. They're just looking to set up a tent for a couple of weeks out of the year in their parking lot. T and P's okay with the proposed location, Fire Marshal's okay with the proposed location. So, you know, in the past, we've treated these as modifications to approvals, so we're just kinda keeping with that.
Are, are we being able to, being asked to do this on a going-forward basis or on a one-time basis?
The request is to do this yearly, so they will be doing this annually. You know, this month, they wanted to do it for the first two weeks in September, but based on your meeting times, they're looking to do the 15th through the 29th, and then going forward, they'll be doing the first two weeks of September.
Okay, again, so that I understand, they're gonna have to come before us for this year?
No, this, this approval will be for them to do it annually without coming back to you guys.
And the staff is comfortable with that?
Yeah, they have supplemental parking, they have the parking to offset what they're losing for those couple of weeks plus kind of the, in zoning terms, gain of active area for retail. So the parking works out, it's, it's not interrupting the flow of the traffic throughout the lot, so we don't see any concerns with it.
Okay, and what is the action we take?
I'll pull it up, it'll just kinda just be similar to what you usually do. Just get it up on the screen for you.
And this isn't Southern California, two weeks, a lot of time to sell pool chemicals in Norwalk.
Nothing groundbreaking.
Right. All right, is there, there are motions to approve this?
Moved, I'll move it.
All right, Frank moved it, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and Galen, seconds, any discussion? All right, if not, let's do it, this, I think we can do this through a show of hands, all those in favor? I, looks like it's unanimous. Okay. Discussion of other items. Steve's status report on the industrial zone study, the zoning rewrite and South Norwalk TOD study. Steve, I don't know if you're talking or not, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm bumping out my basement in, in two meetings.
Oh, sorry about that.
I'm sorry, would you have a question?
The status reports.
Oh, certainly. Zoning regulations, so we have the public meetings associated with that starting not next week, but the week after at the end of the week, and then they're gonna run through the following week. We'll get, we're just finalizing Zoom information, and we'll have that out to the public in a flyer, if not tomorrow, then Monday. Let me see, next, next thing would be the industrial zones report. So the, the committee met last week to go over the recommendations in, in the, in the draft report, the committee had several changes they wanted made, so the consultant is working on those. Hopefully, those are done next week, and then I'll get that report out to the commission, planning, and out to the public, so we can start to review that. The waterfront study just kinda started this last week or so. The consultant was down earlier in the week, spent a couple of days here touring the area, looking at the waterfront. And today and yesterday, we had a whole series of interview with property and business owners all up and down the harbor area. So we've been kind of talking to different constituencies and different groups, and got a lot of good information and a lot of good feedback on the. And got a lot of good information and a lot of good feedback on the, on the river and the how, how in the harbor and how it functions and the issues and uh, items associated with that. So the committee will probably meet to talk about that in a few weeks and and kind of get that rolling. And public, public presentation and workshops probably towards the end of the calendar year on that study.
And merging of the planning and zoning commissions?
I haven't heard anything, so I don't know exactly when that's going to get back in front of the ordinance committee.
Um, okay. Anything else?
Not for me, no.
All right, if not, then approval of the minutes of the August 18th meeting. Uh, so I, okay, Josh moves, there a second? Please?
I'm unable to uh, second. I wasn't there, so I have to abstain.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Michael.
Seconds, uh, and again, by a show of hands, all those in favor? Um, all right, so it's Galen, Josh, Richard and Marcella. That's the four votes needed. Frank and I were not.
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't there.
Right, Frank and I will abstain, neither of us was there. Um, comments of the director?
Nothing further from me.
Okay, comments of commissioners?
Happy Labor Day.
Yeah.
All right, uh, Steve, our next meeting?
I think it's the 15th, that's a Wednesday, right? Brian, is that the right date?
September 15th. Uh, preview of what might be on that?
Um, good question. We maybe, I probably not have Van Zant back. I don't think they'll be ready at that juncture. Um, there are a few applications. I know there's the 272 of Main Avenue extension of time request, that was the former BJ site that was approved and appealed and extended out a couple of times.
I think 40 Fallen will be back for, uh, to finish up their public hearing. Um, 283 Richard's app for a preliminary review. And then um, 9 through 13 Leonard Street is looking to modify their previous approval. And Michelle might have and a site plan review, um, can't remember which one.
Uh, Steve, is it too late for me to say something um, about the Van Zant project?
Yeah, probably not a good idea to to talk about.
Okay, okay.
I should mention, um, I did, yeah, I do have one quick comment. We did have the, we had a schedule, we had to cancel the joint meeting with the planning commission on the East Norwalk TOD regs that was supposed to be last week. We're looking at Monday, October, no, Monday September 27th for the make-up date. I'll send out an invite and for that.
Okay, Steve, when is the, um, God, I'm going to feel stupid saying this, but didn't they call it like Planet Palooza or something like that?
Yeah, so that, that's been, that's what I mentioned earlier, that was supposed to be when that was initially planned, we thought we'd be able to do a virtual, uh, do it in person, but kind of Delta variance kind of messed that up, so now it's going to be all virtual. But that starts on the 17th, which is actually a Friday evening. So I'll I'll send that, that's the flyer I'll get out to you either tomorrow or Monday.
And so, so the consultants themselves will not be coming to Norwalk?
Not for that, no.
Okay.
Is a Friday evening a good time? Typically, the city doesn't hold any meetings on a Friday evening.
Wasn't our first choice, but we're, we're, it's just we're boxed in with between different holidays and different other things to to move along. So everything will be recorded, so you know, there'll be chance to to reconnect. And and then the whole following week, there are, I think there's four topic workshops, three or four topic workshops the next week that people can plug into as well.
Okay. Steve, is there any time constraint on the uh, application for 25 Van Zant that they had to give a letter for?
That, uh, we talked to them, they said they they're willing to do so if if we're up against it, which we probably are.
I mean, you know, I I I know that uh, our chairman just asked if it was inappropriate to speak about that application. And I did hear your response, but I I'm going to say this anyway. Um, I I just hope they would come before us with a complete application at some point. We've heard, I I don't even know how many hours on on this, um, and it just keeps morphing. So that's all I'll say.
All right. Sounds good. See you all then on September 15th. Until then, please stay well.
Okay, have a good night.
Good night.